All right. Good afternoon. This is a meeting of the Boards and Commission Candidate Review Committee, meeting Monday, March 15th, 2021, 3:00 P. M. I am the acting, I guess, president, but Board Member in charge here, and we'll go ahead and do a call to order and a roll call. Starting with my left, we've got Josh Stecker, the Assistant City Clerk and Open Government Affairs Administrator.
I'm here.
Councilmember Jenny Wook.
Here.
Councilmember Robin Denson.
Here.
And Ben Coronado of the Parks Commission. He's the President, I believe, of that commission. Thank you. Shall we do a pledge of allegiance?
That's not typically done with us, but we can, sure.
Okay, well, if it's not typical, let's do it this time, and then we'll hold you next time. How's that, since we called? Thank you. We have on our agenda the approval of the minutes for February 16th, 2021.
I moved to approve the minutes of February 26th, February 16th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And so the minutes are approved. Okay, have we had an opportunity to review the suggested interview questions that we came up with?
Yeah.
Okay, do we need to approve those?
Those are fine, as long as you don't want to make any changes, they're good to go.
Okay, anyone want to make any changes?
I think they're good.
They're great.
Okay, and I do want to acknowledge now, we have got the Mayor of Gig Harbor, Mr. Kit Kuhn, has joined us.
Thank you.
And Jeff Langham, the City of Gig Harbor's Public Works Director, has also joined us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see here. So we have reviewed the suggested interview questions, we're good with that. We will now move to the applicant interviews. First on our list is Ms. Anastasia Wright, who is applying for the Parks Commission. Do you want to go ahead and welcome her to the meeting?
She should be joining as a panelist momentarily.
Okay. And I'm sorry, councilmembers, with the questions that we'll be asking him, there are six questions, so we'll just break them up, one, two, and three, four, five, and six. Councilmember Wook, if you'll take the first question. Councilmember Denson, if you'll take the second question, I'll take the third. We'll just go in that order with all the rest of the questions. Thank you.
And. Anastasia, are you able to talk now? I think you should have.
There you are. Welcome to the meeting. Thank you for taking time out of your day today.
Oh, thank you very much for the opportunity.
And Ms. Wright, is it okay if I call you Anastasia?
Anastasia or Anna, whichever is easier.
Whichever is most comfortable for you. Thank you very much, Anna. If you're ready, we will begin with the questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, councilmembers, are you ready?
Ready.
Councilmember Wook, you have the first question, please.
Yes, hi, Anastasia. Thank you for being here. First question is, please introduce yourself and let us know why you'd like to be on the Parks Commission.
Okay. So my name is Anastasia Wright. I live in Gig Harbor since 2019. So one of the two years I live here, actually, I've been in the house. I am a new member of the community, and that's the main reason I want to be part of the Parks Commission. I want to serve the community. Because I think that's the most efficient way to become a real member of the community. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Denson?
Well, welcome, Anastasia. Thanks so much. And I have to say, when I first came to Gig Harbor, I also applied for the Parks Commission. I didn't get on. It took me a couple tries. For you, I agree, it's a great way to get involved.
Yeah.
So my question is, do you have any knowledge of the Parks Commission and its role?
So I have been reading about what the Parks Commission is doing and the current issues that they have been discussing. I think that, from what I can understand, that all of the Parks Commission is more advisory, and it's like the voice of the citizens of Gig Harbor. And we would advise the Mayor and the City Council to what is our opinion on the several issues of the parks, like the development and the yeah, the development and how we can sustainably develop our city and our parks.
Very good. Anastasia, what is your favorite Gig Harbor city park? Why? And how could it be improved?
That is a very difficult question, because you know, I haven't been able to really see all the parks of our city yet. So I really like going to Semel Park, Semel Homestead Park. We walk there with all our visitors in town, and we are with our dog. It's quite near our house, so it's very easy to get there. And we love going to the Donkey Creek Park there, to the estuary. That I believe that there are discussions to rename also, which is, for me, it's a very exciting moment in in our city. So regarding improvements, I'm not so sure. I think that maybe access to the water for kayaks and things like that would be good for paddling. I think that now it is easier for big boats to go in the water, but it's not so easy for kayaks and other paddling things to go. Yes.
Councilmember Wook, next question.
Thank you. Well, Anastasia wants to answer each park that's available to the public. That'll be a wonderful place for our citizens to hit the water with their kayaks. Yeah. I have a question for you. What do you feel are the major issues the Parks Commission should be focusing on?
Yeah. So I think that the Parks Commission should be focusing on the sustainable development of the city, which is, I think, what is already doing. And also the connection to, of our present, to the past, to the how the people who used to live here before us can have more representation in the life of the city. And how their life can be more visible in our public spaces. Yep.
Anastasia, thank you.
Councilmember Denson?
Okay, the Parks Commission meets monthly on the first Wednesday of each month at 5:30. Do you have any other commitments that would keep you from participating in these meetings?
No, I work regularly at the food bank, at our local food bank, but I do not work on Wednesdays.
And Anastasia, one last question. Do you have anything you'd like to add, or any questions for us about the Parks Commission?
When will you take a decision?
Well, we have three candidates that we're interviewing today. I'm not sure how many positions we've got open. Josh, can you tell me on that?
Yeah, we've got three vacancies currently, I think, with people that are due to, that are due to expire this next month.
Okay.
So we have three spots to fill.
We should have a decision within this week, and we'd probably be notifying you sometime early next week, I believe. Is that correct, Josh?
We'll probably know at the end of this meeting, if you're able to come to a decision. I can let people know tomorrow.
Very good. Okay, there we go.
Awesome. And can I ask you another question?
Certainly.
So do the different commissions of the city, like, for example, the Arts Commission and the Parks Commission work together on several issues? Because I think also that would be extremely interesting.
There might be cross, I won't say contamination, but cross communication between members. I don't know if it's official, the Boards, different Boards get together, but I'm sure in a small town, conversations do take place. Ben, would you like to add anything to that?
We've definitely collaborated with the Arts Commission in the past. You know, we've worked with them with a few heritage pieces, and then we also have the the, in the Grandview Forest, we had the stags that we collaborated with them on to do the wood carvings in the, in the parks.
Very good.
But yeah, there is definitely mixing with the, between the two commissions, working with them.
And Anastasia, Ben is the President of our Parks Commission. So. Well, thank you for your time. Do you have any other things you want to leave us with before we let you go?
Can I ask one question?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I had my hand up. I'd like to, you know, we have approximately 22 parks. Can you, can you do a brief knowledge of, say, five of our parks? We have a lot going on in our different parks, so maybe if you could give a brief knowledge of, say, five of our parks.
So I'm not sure. I know the names of five of our parks. So I know the Cushman Trail. Is this considered the park? I know that there are discussions about improving the signs, the signs that we have on the, on Cushman Trail. As I said, about, I know about Semel Park, that I visit also often. About Donkey Creek. And the other trail that is on the other side of the harbor, that I don't remember the name. I'm really sorry, I'm very bad with names. And yeah, I think that's all. I'm really sorry.
Thank you.
That's good. I would be hard pressed to name five of the parks myself sometimes, so no problem. And I've been here my whole life. Ms. Wright, again, thank you for your time today, and we will be reaching out. Anyone else want to have any final questions or comments?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And at this time, I do want to acknowledge, we have Laura Petit, who is our Tourism and Communications Director, has also joined us in the interview. And then, I guess, Ms. Wright, you're welcome to go ahead and exit the interview, and we'll allow the next participant to join us.
Aye.
Thank you again. And Josh, if you want to go ahead and bring in Ben Lorenz?
So yes.
Ben has not signed on yet, but as soon as he does, I'll promote him. He's not scheduled until 3:20.
Got it. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, if I can just, I want to know that there's knowledge about our parks or that people are signing on for. So if I can just ask that same question, I'd appreciate it.
That's fine, as long as we do ask all three participants the same question as well, to make sure that all are treated fairly.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I will leave you to the last question on that. We'll go through the first six, and then I'll let you have the last one on that. So we've got five minutes. Do we want to discuss anything between, or take any kind of a break? How do you want to handle that, Josh?
I don't have any further business for you, so if you want to just take a quick recess, we can do that and come back at 3:20.
And see if Ben's okay with everyone else, or I'm just going to probably hang out here.
How, how many?
Are we here?
How many park commissions are up for?
We have three positions openings and three candidates for review today, two of which have been on the Parks Commission already.
Okay. Do you mind if we discuss, since we have five minutes, is it okay to discuss a little bit?
Certainly.
Okay. Um. You know, one reason why I am here today is because I think it's important to find the right people. I think Anastasia has a lot to offer if she was more knowledgeable about our parks. But I, I really, I would want to wait until we had someone that, I mean, I, I know I'm involved in the city, but I can, any one of us can tell a lot of things that are going on with five of our parks. We've got about 22 parks, and we've got major things happening with seven of them. And they're out there. The information's out there in the public, it's at our council meetings, it's in the paper. They're at the commission meetings, at the park commission meetings. There's a lot of knowledge available. And if I was taking a test, I would have names of them right in front of me. So I, I feel we should hold off on her until we, until she does more, has more knowledge of our parks. And if someone else came with the same amount of knowledge that she had, I would hope that we would wait until someone did more studying on their knowledge of our parks.
All right, duly noted. I would say that these are not a test, these are just interview questions. And to her defense, she's only been here for two years, and one of those years was during COVID, when we did have park closures. So that could limit a citizen's ability to experience our parks, but I do agree with your sentiment.
Yeah, I absolutely appreciate the Mayor's comments. My concern is that we don't have any other applicants, and this has been posted for a while, hasn't it, Josh?
Yeah, the advertisement went up on February 1st and closed on March 8th, I believe.
Yeah, so I mean, I struggle with it because she seemed great, she wants to be involved, she's either working or volunteering at Fish, which is awesome. And she had the gumption to get her application in on time. No one else did.
So we, and we have two more next year. We'll have two more vacancies on the Parks Commission in 2022. So.
I remember the last appointment meeting we were at, there was another really decent candidate, the one where we appointed Roger Henderson at. There was another really good candidate. Would it be possible to reach out to them to see if they would be interested in an interview again?
Ben, I actually did reach out to that person, I think, when we first opened this, and just let them know that it was open again, and I didn't get an application from them.
So we still.
Josh, appreciate that.
Two of the, two of the three people I've already, that are interviewing today are already on. So my point is, if we don't fill it all in the same day, even if we only have three, quality is, you know, they're all quali, they're all quality, but knowledge of the parks is more important than just filling it, to me. So if you had to wait a period of a couple months to get one more, it seems like Ben's, you know, running the park, chairing it quite well, and so I think it still could, could do fine.
Okay. Well, we still will, of course, allow all the councilmembers to make their recommendation, and then I guess that recommendation then goes to you or to Ben?
This is a council-appointed position, and it's appointed by the council, full council.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Wook.
But that's totally true, but I would think all council would be, want to have the support of the, if, if the Chair of meaning bid, if the Chair of any of these groups had a change of who they wanted, I would hope we would listen to that person to weigh in.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All opinions are respected.
I do really appreciate her putting herself out there, being so new in the community and wanting to get involved, though. That, that's really showing a lot, I think. And especially, I mean, during the pandemic, I can see her, that it would be difficult to get the knowledge of all the parks. I agree, there should have been more knowledge, but it would be very difficult during the pandemic to get to know the parks. But yeah, I agree that there should have been more knowledge there.
Okay, so 3:21, have we got Ben Lorenz yet?
He has not joined yet. I'm going to get my call right now and see if he's having any technical issues.
So I like the color of your house, Robin.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
I really like it. I've always wanted to paint my house red, and I think it turned out really good.
You actually can't see a lot of it unless you go on Randall, but I like, I like red, I like it.
Yeah, I figured that was kind of good. I mean, it's not like it's out there, because it's, my house is kind of tucked back, but I like looking at.
Do you have a Jimi Hendrix song for the doorbell?
No, that's a good idea.
Yeah, Jimi Hendrix, Red House.
Oh, it looks good.
My neighbors, when I was growing up, they had the Beatles. Someone's knocking on the door, da-da-da-da, in that ringtone.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it was wild every, I'd just go over and hit that, hit that button just to hear that song.
Oh, cool. How cool.
Was that Paul McCartney?
It was, it was the Beatles. It's, "Someone's knocking on, open the door and let 'em in."
That's not the Beatles, that's Captain and, that's someone else.
No, it isn't.
It's not.
I don't know about the Beatles.
I think it's Paul McCartney. I'm going to look now.
We're testing you, Spencer. I don't thi, I think it's Paul McCartney. He's going to Google it now. So great job on the conference. I meant to email you, Robin, the coffee grant. Great job.
Paul McCartney, whatever, one of the Beatles, and to a seven-year-old, it's the Beatles. I wasn't even seven, I was, I was under five, because we moved out of there when I was five, so.
Were the Beatles together when you were five years old?
No, they broke up in 19, well, it might have been, actually, I think they broke up in like 1978. And John Lennon was killed, I believe, in 1981.
Geez.
But don't quote me on that. But it was, I think it was, they came to America in 1963 and changed rock and roll forever.
Yeah. Totally.
So was Ringo the drummer?
Yeah.
So if you, I Googled Ringo the other day, and wow, that guy had a hard life. He almost died, he, he almost died several times before he was 15. He, he couldn't, you know, he was so ill for too many times in the hospital for so long that he couldn't write at age 15. Because he was out of school so long in the hospital. You know, it's, it's amazing what, you know, what happened. It's worth Googling sometimes.
Yeah, well, they definitely got made up in spades after that. I mean, working with the Beatles, and then it was, they always like throw him into movies, like he was in a movie called Caveman.
I watched that with his wife, Barbara Bach.
And he's, he's married to Barbara Bach.
Yeah, which is Joe, so she's a.
She's a blonde girl.
Wife is Barbara Bach's sister.
Who, what?
Joe Wass, Joe Wass's wife is Barbara Bach's sister. So that's why they're in touch so much, is Barbara Bach and Joe Wass's wife are sisters.
Interesting.
So Ringo and George Wass know each other super, super well.
Got it. Well, I know that the song "Layla," which is written by Eric Clapton, is about George Harrison's old wife, Layla, and they were having a bear. So if you listen to the lyrics of that song, you can be like, whoa, putting it out there.
Wow.
But that's the rock and roll, rural world for you. Don't get into it, by my advice. Stay in politics. Much safer. Okay, any, any word from Ben Lorenz?
Oh, I've left a voicemail with him, and I don't know if he's just forgotten, or.
Okay, he can, he can sometimes be connecting. Come in late for meetings. Is Mary Barber in the waiting room?
Nope, she's not here yet either. She's not scheduled until 3:40, so. If you want, I can.
Let's go ahead and pause the recording, so we're just jabber, jibber-jabbering now. And there's no reason for the citizens to have to listen to that.
We can see if Mary's ready to go early.
Yeah. And I don't really want to move from parks to LTAC, even if we have the opportunity yet, and those folks are not scheduled so much later, so.
Yeah.
What? Okay. Our, our meeting is now back in session. We'd like to welcome Mary Barber into the conversation. Mary, thank you for joining us.
Sure, thanks for having me. You got your glasses fixed.
I did, I'm so grateful. Is it okay?
The rest of us.
Is it okay if we call you Mary?
Oh, yes.
Thank you very much. All right, Councilmember Wook, do you want to go ahead and start off?
You betcha. Hi, Mary, nice, nice to have you this afternoon.
Hi, Jenny, thank you.
Welcome, welcome. Question number one. Please introduce yourself and let us know why you would like to continue on the Parks Commission.
Sure. So I think I know everybody on this call, but I'm Mary Barber, and I'm happy to be here today. As you know, I currently serve on the Parks Commission as the Vice Chair, and I would like to continue serving on the Parks Commission. Period. No. The rest is up to everyone else. I started my service a year ago, and I really feel like I'm just figuring things out. So I feel like my most effective time on the Commission is probably yet to come. I came to the Commission last year with a goal of helping improve our parks, and especially those that serve families as our community continues to grow with younger people moving in, and even us older people have sometimes kids who come to visit and that kind of thing. So this really continues to be a focus of mine, along with increasing awareness about our city's history, which I think is something that we can do with the parks, and I've been talking to Robin about that, and, you know, some other people, as we did the renaming project and that kind of thing. I think there's some real possibilities to mesh the parks with our history more than we've been doing.
Well, that sounds exciting.
I think it could be really fun.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Denson?
Yes, Mary. The second question is, do you have any knowledge of the Parks Commission and its role?
No.
Maybe you could highlight what you think, what you think the Parks Commission most, their most important role is.
I, I believe that the most important role of the Parks Commission is to involve the community, the public, the users, the residents in our parks in a variety of different ways. And I think that we did that at my first, and I think only in-person meeting before, you know, COVID. I think we may have had two meetings. COVID. I think we may have had two meetings, two in-person meetings, but we were, we were starting to work on some really exciting things with Parks Appreciation Day, starting to talk about Adopt a Park, those kinds of things. And I think bringing the community into the parks and bringing the parks to the community is, is really our function. And also serving as an advisor to council on what we're hearing in the community.
Mary, what is your favorite Gig Harbor City Park? Why and how could it be improved?
There's so many favorite Gig Harbor parks that I walk by when I'm walking downtown, but I think my favorite Gig Harbor Park right now is kind of one of the reasons that I really like being on the commission. And it doesn't need improvement because it's Veterans Park and we just finished improving it. And so one of the reasons that I like it is going back to the focus that I have with families. It's a playground where people can go with their children and gather and play. And I also really like it because again, at one of my first two meetings, um, we were talking about how we could involve the public and we chose a pretty unique way to involve the public in the redesign of that playground by asking children, again, users of the new playground, what they wanted. So I just, I really like it because of the way that we involve the kids, because of the way that the commission was used as an advisory group and we were consulted on how that playground was going to look. And so that's the one that I'm choosing for today.
Council member, what?
Yes. What, you may have already touched on this. What do you feel are the major issues the Parks Commission should be focusing on?
Yeah, um, I have touched on some of it, but I'm gonna, I have a little bit of a different, I don't know, twist may not be the right word, I think, on that too. And that is that I'm concerned about capacity issues. Um, I'm concerned that, um, Jeff has a twitch in his eye every time we have a meeting. No. I, I'm concerned about, you know, staff is overworked and when the commission only meets once a month, we, we just, there's only so much we can do. And if we keep adding to our pile without doing the work that we already have on our plate, I think that that's a huge problem. So I think that we need to focus on doing what is already there rather than adding new projects. Having said that, I think we could maybe when we have lots of work on our plate, we might need to to meet, especially since we've started using Zoom more, we might be able to meet more often as a commission. Um, that made Jeff's eye twitch again. And, and Terry just has a voodoo doll with pins in it that look like me, I think. But I think that projects like that, I think when we have big projects, we could meet more often so that we can help more. And I also think that one of the projects that I already mentioned was Parks Appreciation Day. We had a really, really good plan put together for Parks Appreciation Day last year. We didn't get to implement it because of COVID. If we had, I think that Nicole would have owed us all strawberry shortcake because of the great plan. She said if we got enough volunteers, she'd give us all strawberry shortcake. Um, and then COVID hit, so she still owes us, I guess. But we had a subcommittee that we had gotten together and we had put together, Ben was on this group too, and we put together a list of companies and service clubs that we were approaching and asking them to basically adopt a park, which is another program I think we should do. But like Heritage was go, Heritage Distilling was going to choose a park and their employees were going to get together for an employee work party and fix up that park, do the work in that park. So we were strategically trying to get a group of, groups of people in the parks. And I think that that's a way, working with the city staff, that we can expand what's on our plate without adding to our plate, if that makes sense. And it also brings the community into the parks.
Totally. What a great idea that is. And, and one of the conversations the council has been happen, having is maintenance of parks, which actually, as you said, if you bring some volunteers in, then it, it is helpful that way.
Yeah.
Yeah. So thank you, Mary. Was it my turn?
No, council member Denson.
Thanks.
Great ideas, Mary. Okay, the Parks Commission meets monthly. I have the easiest questions.
I was gonna say, Robin, you keep asking me questions I've already answered. No.
You could attend the first meeting or the first Wednesday of every month, all of our meetings.
I, I can make the meeting.
Okay. Excellent.
Okay, Mary, last question for you. Uh, do you have anything you'd like to add or any questions for us about the Parks Commission?
I have a, kind of a, a concern that I want to add and I, I don't want my, my tone to be too negative on this one, but I do have a concern that again, I've talked to some of you guys about already too, that I'm, I have a concern that we aren't always being used the way that we should be being used. And again, I think it gets to the, the number of meetings that we're able to have and that kind of thing, but I, I feel like a lot of times we aren't involved in the decision-making. We're more involved in just approving another decision that's been made. And I think that that has been really frustrating for me this year because I'd rather be a doer, I'd rather be involved and hands-on than listening to a presentation and then going, yeah, move to approve. You know, I, I think I'd, I'd like to see us more involved in the planning and the development processes of things than we have been. I think that a lot of that frustration has been because of the pandemic, we can't meet in person, we can't do the things that we want to do. Um, and I think also it has to do with having no Parks Manager and Jeff being as stretched as he is and that kind of thing. So we don't have the staff that we need. Hopefully, we can fix that soon, too. But I think it's been a real challenging year and I feel like it kind of reached a boiling point in February with the discussion about renaming the parks. And I think that several of us felt like we went from decision A to a meeting where we said, okay, we're not going to talk about it, to then a meeting that had a completely different recommendation. And we weren't involved in any of the discussion behind that. There was a whole lot of work that went on. And I'm completely supportive of honoring our first peoples. I mean, I lived in Alaska for twenty-four years. I know about first peoples. But I think that in hindsight, there could have been a way to involve us more in the process.
Uh, Mr. Mary, you would like to ask your final question? He is still with us?
He's on mute.
Maybe he's on the phone. Uh, Mr. Mayor? Well, we will recognize that we did give him two opportunities to respond and so we will have to move on. Mary, I'd like to thank you for your time today. We will definitely have an answer for you, uh, if not by the end of the day, uh, definitely by the end of the week.
Okay.
And then.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ben, did you, did you want to throw anything in? Okay, we're good. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, one sec. I just want to say, Mary has been a great asset to the Parks Commission. You know, she's, she's been a fantastic contribution and, you know, it's.
Thank you, Ben.
Working with her. Yeah.
Talk to you guys later.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Bye. Thanks, Mary.
Bye.
Okay, Josh, who we got next is James Carver. Is it Carver? Do we know how to pronounce his name?
I'm not sure how it's pronounced. No.
Carr?
Is not signed in yet.
Okay. And we still have not heard from Ben Lorenz?
No, um, I'm gonna keep trying him if I can get him, you know, before the end of the meeting this afternoon. Are you okay with that?
Sure, if everyone else is okay with that.
Log on a little bit later. Okay. Yeah, I'll keep trying to see if I can reach him. Um, the next.
How would you like me to go about things then? Do you want me to go ahead and sign out or do you want me to stick around in case Ben is able to sign on and what happens if Ben is unable to sign on? Does he get a reschedule on the interview?
Well, if there's positions to be filled, I guess he can re, he can sign up as many times as a citizen wants. Uh, although I would say if he continues to miss, um, interviews, it's not a reflective, in a positive manner. Jeff?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna actually speak to Mary real quick. I, I know she's been on before. She's been on there for a little over a year. I have to say she's very solutions-oriented and I appreciate her being on the Parks Commission uh, from my point of view. And she even has recommended that we have between the chair, the vice chair, Terry and myself, some pre-Parks Commission meetings in preparation for the Parks Commission, upcoming Parks Mission meeting. And I, I think we had our first one just in March, didn't we, Ben? Right before the March meeting. I, I think it was helpful, so, but she's always looking for ways.
It really helped the meetings go very smoothly.
Yeah. It was good, well organized. Anyway, that's my two cents. Appreciate her being on the Parks Mission.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'm gonna sign off unless, uh, unless asked to come back if Ben does show up because I don't need to be here for the LTAC, so.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Bye.
Bye, thanks.
And so, uh, Ben, we probably would have to ask you to sign out uh, because again, this is for LTAC and I have no real problem with you being here, but, um, Josh, you want to advise us on that?
Uh, no, he can stick around if he wants. Ben, I can shoot you an email if I can get ahold of Ben Lorenz and get him back on. I can just shoot you an email real quick if that works. Or you can stick around, it's up to you.
Um, okay. No, just shoot me an email and then, uh, just give me, you know, two or three minutes to make sure I see it and, um.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, okay. So then just let me know what the next move is. If, I mean, is it just stay vacant? If he's not.
Yeah, that would be vacant until we. It's kind of up to the members if they want to reschedule it. Yeah.
Thank you for your flexibility, Ben.
Thank you, guys.
Bye.
Yep. And we do have Mr. Carr in the waiting room here, so I can bring him on when you're ready.
I'm ready for him. Jenny, Robin, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, folks.
Hello, Mr. Cur, is it, could, help us with your pronunciation of your last name, sir?
Carrer.
Carrer. And is it okay if we call you James?
Please.
Thank you very much. James, I'm Spencer, welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Our pleasure. Uh, I'll, I'll also allow our other council members to introduce themselves.
Hi, James, I'm Jenny Wook, City Council.
Hello, Jenny.
James, I'm Robin Denson, City Council. Thanks for being here.
Okay, and so you are applying for the position on the LTAC Committee. I guess council member Wook, you can go, and I'll acknowledge Laura Petita has now joined us. She is the City of Gig Harbor's Tourism and Communications Director as well. Thank you for joining us, Laura. Council member Wook, you have the first question.
You bet. Uh, thanks for being here again, James. Um, my question is, please introduce yourself a little bit and let us know why you'd like to be on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Yeah, absolutely. So Joey, I believe was his name, sent me an email. I'm not sure who referred myself over his way, but he had extended, you know, an opportunity to, to join this council here and I, I think based off of my background is, you know, why I was brought in. I work for a firm called Vacasa. Uh, we are the largest property manager of vacation rentals in the United States. And myself, I developed territory in Clealum, Ronald Easton, as well as the Olympic and Key Peninsula, Gig Harbor, Vashon, Bainbridge, all the way up to Port Angeles, Port Townsend, Squim, for example, dealing with different municipalities and obviously the compliance process is different in certain places and obviously, uh, you know, data is something that I have access to working for such a large firm. So, uh, on my end, I have a ton of investors and buyers who are contacting me left and right, who are looking to invest and purchase, you know, vacation property and be a bit hands-off and enlist a firm like Vacasa to manage the process. So from an operational standpoint, we have housekeepers, a general manager, an operation manager who work in tandem with myself on the sales side to be present physically to clean homes, communicate with guests, communicate with owners, et cetera. So somebody connected the dots along the way. It was either a client I've been working with in Gig Harbor. We acquired a company called, uh, it was Annie's Concierge Service or something of that nature. Her name is Abigail Lopez, excuse me, Abby's Concierge Service. It, it could have been her, uh, but like I said, somebody connected the dots and, and, you know, thinks that I would have a, a valuable input in this type of conversation.
Thank you.
And I am interested as well, being that I'm a Gig Harbor native. My parents live off of Canterwood Boulevard. I still list that as my primary residency. They've got quite a big place and I bounced back and forth between there and then a space that I, I own up in Seattle.
Council member Denson?
All right, thanks, James. Do you have any knowledge of LTAC and its role so far?
Negative.
Okay. James, lodging tax is collected by the, for the purpose of providing funds for tourism promotion in communities. What makes our mission meaningful to you?
I apologize. I am familiar, just not familiar with the acronym itself.
Okay.
Yes, that, 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 that makes sense.
Do you want to take a shot at the answer question?
Sure, sure. Yeah, that's, that's something, you know, on our end, uh, that is a guest-facing fee that we're rolling up into our program, but I'm very, very familiar in the sense that we're compliant with those taxes, uh, being that, you know, we're needing to pay them at the point of reconciliation with the county or the city.
So to clear, this is the mayor king, to clarify that. So the knowledge on, on this committee, you know, um, you said you do have some knowledge of this, of this type of committee, just not the acumen, right?
Sure.
Okay. So where it's made up of, of two parts, collectors and receivers?
Fair. The receiver being Gig Harbor. The collector, you know, I guess being Vacasa as the, uh, vendor that is collecting the tax itself. I, I don't know if that is your question specifically.
The receivers are people that sit on the group that actually get money from the lodging tax, from the receive, from the collectors.
I see.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Wook, next question is for you.
Yes, so, uh, James, do you possess any particular expertise that would benefit the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee?
Outside of an abundance of information regarding the vacation market itself, not to my knowledge, uh, you know, aside from being somebody who, you know, would want to be involved and, you know, is eager to learn more. Again, I think the reason that this opportunity was extended to myself is because of where my specific layer of expertise comes from. But to be frank, you guys, this is hitting me at the end of quarter while I'm knee-deep in, you know, sales activity, onboarding homes, and this has been thrown on my calendar. So you know, I, I think that there's obviously some research to be done on my end here rather than just kind of blindly speaking about things I don't know about, but, uh, you know, I, I guess I'm taking this opportunity to learn more myself. I, I know this is deemed an interview, but for myself, you guys are actually filling in some gaps here as well.
James, thank you. You live in Seattle. Did I understand that correctly?
Correct.
Thank you.
And council member Denson, next question is for you.
Okay. Um, do you possess any particular expertise that would benefit the board?
Next question, I'm sorry.
All right. LTAC, oh, gosh, I get the most boring questions. LTAC meets monthly on the. LTAC meets monthly on the second Thursday at 11:00 AM. Do you have any other commitments that would keep you from attending meetings?
Negative.
And James, uh, do you have anything you'd like to add or any questions you have for us about the LTAC?
Yes, so what role are you looking to fill here? And what type of expertise per se are you looking to acquire? Uh, what type of information are you guys seeking?
I'll try to take a shot at that. So I believe we are required by law to have, like with the mayor described, our collectors and receivers. Um, I believe a collector would be uh someone like a hotel or a bed and breakfast um that receives tax dollar uh or can collect tax dollar funds. And then um I guess that goes to organizations that are the and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Mr. Mayor, the receivers who then utilize the tax dollars for promotion of tourism?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, that that there's a huge, there's a huge connection to what we're doing. Uh, Vacasa just acquired another company called Turnkey, which has inventory in the area. Uh, and with that acquisition, you know, we're going to expand. Uh, so you're talking about singular properties that generate anywhere from, you know, forty thousand to a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of gross revenue annually. Um, so you know, it's, I think it's a, it's a big impact when you talk about, uh, you know, what type of 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 profits are coming from these rentals.
Okay.
Okay, I might ask a question, um, just so a little knowledge. We basically have three to four receivers um or collectors, hotels, and three to four receivers, people that we actually give money to, that are nonprofits that um promote tourism in our area. And then uh there's a separate part of the money that we, and that actually is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year now. So there's a separate amount of money that we, the city uses to promote tourism uh that Laura Pettit runs, and I chair the LTAC. So some of this is local, you know, two hour, one hour away, thirty minutes away, and some of this is overnight. Um, with even the local promote Gig Harbor. So what is your goal um for being on LTAC? With that knowledge that you know or what I just gave you? What would be your goal to add to LTAC?
You know, I I I don't know if there's a specific goal on my end here uh quite yet. But uh, being how you guys are breaking down collectors and receivers, you know, I, you said hotels. I imagine that we're still rolled up into that in some sort of way.
Yeah.
Right, so being the, being the receivers uh and you guys, you know, distributing that those funds to promote tourism. Uh, you know, I think my goal, if I were to join this type of team, uh, I I suppose would, you know, would be to to target where that is going as far as the marketing is concerned. Uh, but additionally, where are they coming? I think that's the most important aspect for myself is is when they come here, where are they visiting? Uh, where are they staying? Uh, and that's where I would be able to, uh, you know, again, bring a level of expertise as well as uh some inventory as well, you know, to be able to house these folks. And uh, our approach is very high-end from a customer service and an owner satisfaction standpoint. So uh, you know, these are, these are high-end homes that, you know, we're we're looking to fill as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other final questions, Councilmember Laura? Go ahead.
I do, so um, so your experience is primarily in the vacation rental market. Um, in your experience, how different is that from a standard hospitality experience? Uh, and are are you seeing any changes here in the Gig Harbor market?
Yeah, you know, there's, there's a few bed and breakfasts throughout the harbor. Uh, I recall one in Crescent Valley that was always pretty present as I was, I was driving through there. And um, I think just from the, what's working against my, my uh, the sector of 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 travel, my industry specifically, is the fact that Gig Harbor is such an attractive long-term market. And the housing market itself uh is, you know, you have these open, open, excuse me, these open houses that result in multiple offers uh upon review. They're selecting, you know, something that's well above ask and uh, you know, so it really is a a strong market in the sense that uh investors are up against people who are thirsty to get their hands on something. So uh, it's, it's actually scarce when it comes to inventory um in comparison to, like I said, I I'm managing, uh, I'm developing business in Clealum. You know, between St. Acadia and some of the other spaces over there, you know, there's plenty of opportunity for people to invest. So Gig Harbor itself is a bit of a challenging market in the sense that, again, we have scarce inventory. But the, the, the folks that are in Kirkland in Seattle, working for Microsoft, working for Google, they're looking to put their money places and it's in real estate. So uh, if we are able to identify the right property and somebody gets in there on that side and they're motivated to purchase the property, uh, they will. But for the most part, uh, what I'm already working with are people that have these pre-existing uh, you know, ownership ties to the property itself. Uh, there's not a whole lot of trade at the moment where we're able to get ahead of that and then onboard these homes. So uh, you know, I'd say it's folks who are traveling, uh, have multiple property already. This might be something of a snowbird scenario where they're bouncing back and forth and we're filling in those idle opportunities. That's what we're experiencing a lot in Gig Harbor is people bouncing between multiple residencies and us filling in idle opportunity around them. That was a long-winded answer to your question regarding kind of what we're seeing. But the, the, this short-term rental industry itself has always been a bit behind in the United States in comparison to how this type of home sharing is going on in per se Europe. Uh, so i- it's coming full circle everywhere. Uh, you know, Gig Harbor itself specifically, it's the inventory that is the biggest challenge regarding expansion. Um, but, you know, there's that, there's, that's happening, happening organically uh through one-on-one conversations. And then, as I said, we're acquiring companies left and right as well.
Great, um, just a follow-up on that one too, and I don't wanna put you on the spot on too much data, but Turnkey is a big acquisition. Um, how, do you know off the top of your head what percentage of vacation rentals in Gig Harbor that Vacasa has a say in or a?
That, you know, there's not, not a whole lot. So when we acquired Abigail's, uh, that was, I'd say probably twelve, no, probably more than that. I'd say probably close to two dozen homes, but it was a botched acquisition. Uh, and we were moving too fast at the time. I wasn't covering this territory, otherwise it would have, I was down in Oregon at the time for Vacasa. But um, it it was a poor transition and uh several of the owners never actually ended up making it to Vacasa.com. Uh, they just ended up managing the process themselves. So that's what, there's, there's a lot of self-management. Turnkey only had a handful of properties in Gig Harbor, kind of mirroring what we had now. So I'd say in addition to the Turnkey acquisition, we're probably at fifteen, twenty properties in Gig Harbor in total. We're much more present in Whidby Island, Bainbridge, Vashon, because those are more vacation markets uh where we're not battling the, the, the primary residency issue that I was mentioning in Gig Harbor, where people wanted to buy the inventory and they wanna move there. Everybody wants to move to Gig Harbor to live there right now. So uh, it's more challenging for somebody to invest, find a a vacation rental, uh, you know, that's really gonna give them the return that they're looking for um based upon what they're paying initially.
Good answer.
Laura, any last questions?
None for me.
Okay, thank you. Um, James, Mr. Carrer, thank you for your time today. We will, um, we've got one more interview and I'm sure we will have an answer for you either sometime by the end of the day or maybe potentially before the week is over.
Sounds good, you guys. Sorry, you caught me a little off-guard, but uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, next up is John Moist. Have we got him in the waiting room?
Not yet. He's got another eight, seven minutes before he's scheduled.
Oh, okay.
Well, maybe we can um discuss some, um. I just, I'm always blown away that more, more people, that most people, and this goes with job interviews, some, that they just don't do more research of what they're applying. Um, and um, so I I I wish James had too, but he had, he comes with a lot of knowledge. He comes with a lot of marketing statistics, knowledge. And um, that's worth a lot. You know, he, he knows, he knows, uh, he, he said the right. He had, he had some good answers when um, when we talked about the goal. He said to see why, what they're coming here for. Um, you know, that's, that's uh identifying that. And he, and on top of that, he's gonna know where to find them too. You know, he, you know, as Laura works on different things with uh seeing the people that come here, um, where are they coming from? We, we can find that data. He, he is the type of person of, or what he does with his job, where he's gonna be fairly knowledgeable about the things that we want to promote our city.
He doesn't live in Gig Harbor.
He does some, he did be.
He just told me he didn't live in Gig Harbor. He lives in Seattle.
Well, he said he has a, he has a primary residence at his parents' address in Canterwood.
Yep.
And then also a house in Ca- or in Seattle.
So he did say before, the reason I almost asked the same question you did, but he did say, I, I, I go from Gig Harbor to Seattle, back and forth.
No, he didn't say that. What he said was, he, he uses his parents' house as a primary residence here, but he lives in Seattle.
Okay.
He lives in Seattle.
But he did also talk, you know, as Spencer pointed out, that he spends uh time in here too, so.
He lives in Seattle. He doesn't live in Gig Harbor.
I'm not denying what you're saying, Jenny.
Okay, I'm just saying he doesn't know Gig Harbor.
Well, I, I don't think you can say that he.
He may have grown up here, but we don't know. We didn't, we didn't get to ask that question. But Councilmember Wook, I do believe he said that he, he commutes back and forth to Seattle. I believe he answered the question twice.
Yeah, yeah, you can listen to the recording, Jenny. He said that.
So, I will, I will say this, I, I, this is for people who either live or work in Gig Harbor. And as somebody who has his territory here and manages those fifteen or twenty uh vacation rental relationships, that may be another factor. Um, the thing that stood out to me is that we have with collectors, we've had only hotels as part of LTAC, and it would be nice to see some diversity, especially as vacation rentals start to grow a little bit. We've never had that presence on our, uh, on our committee. And I'm not necessarily saying he's the, the perfect person for it, but having a representation of fifteen to twenty is a, is a compelling side.
My question.
And I would agree with that, but, but my concern is that he's gonna be voting on which groups as recipients receive the money and how tourism is going in this town. And if you don't spend any time in this town, if you live in Seattle, you don't know what's happening with the recipients, and that's my concern. That's why I, that's my concern.
I would assume, just like with the, when he mentioned working in Oregon, that when he has a territory, he has to spend a fair amount of time down here uh to know the market for those. And maybe that's a follow-up question that we can ask him.
Yeah, I thought.
Because that is important.
I thought I heard him say that he grew up in Gig Harbor. Did anybody else hear that?
I thought so, but I don't recall.
Maybe we can confirm that, because that's, that's helpful. Like Laura, if the regulations are that they can live or work here, then.
I, I have two questions, I guess I need to clarify. So um, where would he be slated in as a receiver or a collector? And and how do we ask that question? Do we determine that? Are they predetermined? How's that work?
Predetermined. Collector.
By whom? By his position? Okay, he's collecting, okay.
So all of the vacation rentals that he represents, would, that's the, the collecting side?
Okay, and second question is, uh, we council members, we nominate in this capacity and the mayor appoints?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So um.
No, with, with LTAC, it's council-appointed. It's not mayor-appointed.
Oh.
LTAC is council.
Oh, it is council-appointed, sorry.
Josh, is it inappropriate for you to email him and ask him if he, did he grow up in Gig Harbor?
I think we should go back to the recording first. Because I mean.
Okay, we, we won't be able to access the recording today. We won't get it until after the meeting's adjourned. So that won't be a option.
I think that's, I think since it's a we're, 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 we're actually kind of trying to work on this, our, our group, figuring out the knowledge of Gig Harbor. Um, unless people are opposed to that, that might solve part of the discussion.
I believe I heard him say he grew up in Gig Harbor or he's from Gig Harbor. Um, but I think that just that question is, hey, are you from Gig Harbor or not?
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay.
But I'll let council members weigh in on this as well. I'm not all omnipotent.
I, I just have one more thing to add, if that's, that's okay. I, you know, I think part of the um move forward, and I'm excited to hear from John as well, um, you know, is, is that we also want, want people like Warren to be, who's been appointed, to be able to come on the committee. So it has been ridiculously hard to find people to apply. Um, we, we did a lot of follow-up. Um, I followed up with, I think, seven or eight people trying, and so did other members of LTAC, trying to find people who would apply in the collector position. Um, and, you know, for almost a month or two, nobody would apply.
Right.
That, that's with calls, with emails, with please, please, we'd love.
Right.
Please, we'd love to hear from you.
This is harder than any of the other ones as far as getting, you know, and and there's only a certain amount. It's not like you can find any citizen. So one thing that Laura did mention too is um, you know, the home build, the home, the, the RBO, the Airbnb, they're growing. It's, it's grown and, and we don't have a representation of that. And they have a whole different uh way of looking at it because they're not, you know, a Best Western or a, a chain of one thing. So I think that is important.
I also would say that, that because there are fifteen to twenty, if we have someone else who has a vacation rental, they're just gonna be, you know, representing one spot. Uh, it is nice that he represents multiple spots. Um, and also we can pull in some of that, um, you know, maybe Vacasa is a sponsor for some of the, you know, events that we do uh, like summer concerts in the park or something like that. I do think pulling in that larger presence is interesting.
We also might get more people to pay the tax that they're supposed to pay if we, if we bring on someone that's uh, you know, in that type thing. There's a lot of, most, most people that are renting out their house are not paying lodging tax. They're doing it under the table, so, um, yeah, so this might help make more people on the up and up.
Okay, Josh, it's four twenty-one. Have we got Mr. Moist?
Yeah, let me promote him to the meeting here and, you know, he'll be on.
And uh, I promise the next meeting, we will switch the order of questions asking. So Councilmember Denson can have a harder time asking questions and we'll give the softball questions to either myself, Councilmember, Councilmember Wook.
That's fine. I was just like, oh, no, not this one again.
And Laura, I'm sorry, can you pronounce your last name?
Oh, Pettit.
Pettit, got it, okay. Just so I've got it hyphenated.
So I, it's a little easier, Spencer, it took me a long time, but she finally taught me pet, just like P-E-T, pet.
Well, that's, and that's what I've got written down, but I always wanna read it petite.
And then like I-T, Pettit. She, she was patient with me.
I won't go through the nicknames that, that.
Yeah, no.
They gave me in college.
She was patient with me for a while.
It's particularly hard when they pronounce it petite and then it was pregnant, definitely not petite.
Mr. Moist, are you uh with us? John, can you hear us? Oh, someone calling in on the phone.
Yeah, I think it may be calling on the phone as well.
You, you're, you're on mute? And you're still on mute, if you can hear us?
Josh, do you need to promote? Oh, no, you have.
Okay, so John Moist, if you can hear us, we see you're trying to attempt to get in, but it looks like you're either on mute or and you're still on mute. And you're still on mute? If maybe you want to try to disconnect and reconnect, if you're having connection problems. Uh, we can give you a moment.
I think it might say to unmute, press star eight, but I may be remembering that wrong.
Josh, you, do you know the specific, is it?
I'll give him a call and see.
Okay, looks like he's trying to get in on his phone.
Hey, are you having troubles? Can you hear us? Josh, what would he push on his phone?
I believe it's either star nine or star six.
If you push star nine or star six, it should free up so you, we can hear you.
I'm so sorry. I split the difference and said star eight.
I'm probably on the phone. Yeah, but now, I'm. I will if we, if it doesn't work. So I'll, I'll hang up and you try star six. And if that doesn't work, try star nine. If that doesn't work, then I'll call you back and we'll put you on speaker. Okay. He's been listening through the last ten minutes, so he's caught up to speed.
Was he listening to the last interview? Oh, John.
We haven't now.
No, Josh, Josh led the, the next person.
Thumbs up?
Yeah.
Yay!
Hey, all right, all right.
John, thank you for joining us. That's right.
Go ahead, Spencer, sorry.
That's all right. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. We appreciate it. Uh, we are interviewing you for the LTAC committee. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and let council member, council members, do you want to introduce yourself?
George, Jenny Look here, City Council.
Hello, Jenny.
Hi, John.
Hi, Robin.
Okay, and council member Look, you have the first question.
You bet. John, welcome. I'm glad you're here today. We're all glad you're here today to answer these questions. Um, so my question is, please introduce yourself and let us know why you'd like to be on the lodging tax committee.
Well, my name's John Moist. Uh, I, uh, I. General manager for Arabella's Landing Marina and all our associated. Parts that make up the, the business here, which includes, uh, a couple of guest houses, which we, uh. Uh, we're operating under Airbnbs, but we've pulled them in, uh, into in-house now and. We're managing those ourselves. However, we have yet to, uh, rent those out as. Anything less than thirty days, but once this virus thing subsides, we're, we're, we're going to be renting those as. You know, for overnight mortgage, so we'll be starting to collect lodging tax, uh, on those, uh, those two units. Um. Why do I want to be on the lodging tax advisory committee? Well, I've been interested in tourism in this city for. For almost twenty-two years now. I've been, I haven't been involved, uh, the last few years, but. Uh, uh, I think the resume that I sent you kind of speaks for itself. I, you know, I've, I've, uh. I've done a lot of, a lot of things, been involved in a lot of different activities that help bring tourism into Gig Harbor. Uh, I know that in some quarters, that may not be the, the, the nicest word. Uh, tourism. Uh, I know that, uh, but, uh. I think, I think it's essential, uh, for, for growth in, in Gig Harbor. And anything I can do to, uh, to help along those lines, uh. Uh, I'd be, be more than happy to, uh, to help out.
Thank you, John.
Yes, John, do you have any knowledge of LTAC and its role?
I was on the advisory committee for, I think, I'm not sure, somewhere between three and five years. It, it was a while ago. So I, I, I've been on this committee before. Um, and I, I understand it's, it's collection and, and, uh. Allocation of funds, collection of funds, allocation of funds.
Okay. John, lodging tax is collected for the purpose of providing. Funding for tourism promotion in communities. What makes our mission meaningful to you?
Well, can you define the mission?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Well, you say our mission. I, I'm not, I'm not sure what, what you're, what mission you're talking about. Uh, the, the mission to, to bring tourism to Gig Harbor?
You know, that's a great question. I don't have an answer, so we'll, we'll say right now that the mission is not to go to the moon. Um, Laura, maybe you might be able to, to answer that question for John.
Sure, our biggest mission is to increase, um, increase our lodging tax revenue. So that's through a number of different ways and in an ancillary part of that, uh, increase our sales tax revenue as well. Um, from sources outside of the city of Gig Harbor. Um, so what we're looking at in every decision that we make is, does this impact our long-term vision for what? Uh, what, what tourism dollars can do in Gig Harbor, and that's maximizing it through two things. First, um. Filling our hotels and secondly, driving rate and revenue. Um, so when we already have great occupancy, like, uh, you know, during Maritime Festival. How do we make it even more successful? How do we drive those rates and create an opportunity to bring in more? Uh, revenue for our business partners, more lodging tax for us, uh, because it obviously goes up with percentage of the entire nightly rate. Uh, and then how do we increase sales tax for our, our businesses throughout the city?
Well, it'd be nice if, if, it, it would be, it would be nice if, if this weren't event-driven. But it has been, I think, historically, event-driven. Uh, I mean, I'm right downtown here. I see, you know, people, people walk by my office. By the hunt, when, when the weather gets nice, by the hundreds every day. And, uh, so I see, uh, I don't know whether they're all residents. I, I'm, I'm sure that a lot of them are residents because they have a lot of walkers and a lot of dogs. Um, but I'm sure there's some, some tourists that, that do that as, as well, that come down here for a walk and, and just to see our downtown. Uh, and, and I, I think it's, it looks like it's, it's fairly thriving now. We, it looks like we have some, some new businesses. Uh, uh, down here to attract, uh, uh, folks, folks to town. But when I say, I, I wish it weren't mostly event-driven. Uh, I still think that that's the, that's the primary mover for, for attracting, uh, tourism to, to Gig Harbor. So, I mean, what can we do to, I mean, that's a conversation that I'd love to have with, with the committee is what can we do to? You know, not discounting tourism, said, not setting tourism aside, but what can we do to? Enhance tourism with, with everyday activity. With, with things that, you know, would interest people to come to the Gig Harbor on Wednesday, when they've got the day off, for example. And not, uh, wait for the Maritime Gig Festival. So, you know, those kinds of things interest me.
That's a great answer. Uh, my next question, you may have already answered, John. Um, do you possess any particular expertise that would benefit the board? And I bet you do.
Pi equals three point one four one six. This is Pi Day, if you didn't know that.
Happy Pi Day.
Do I possess any expertise?
Yes.
Um, I think I'm, I think I'm an organizer. Uh, I, I think I've, that's been proven. Uh, you know, by, by what I have, what I've done in the, over the twenty-two years I've been here. Uh. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know where else to go with that. I, I, you know, I, I. I think I probably have a higher than a ninety-eight IQ, so I, I don't know. That has to do with it, but yeah, I, you know, I think, yeah, I'm up for the job, Jenny, you know, I, you know, I can. This isn't rocket science, but, but this is, this is working in collaboration with people. This is bringing ideas together, you know, uh, and, and involving the council and, 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 and staff. And, and, uh, you know, the committee members and, and, and trying to come up with some new things. Uh, you know, I was in, I was in this one, when Loreen Lund was, was in her, you know, prime at the city and. And she came up with some great ideas. Um, uh, to help things out, uh, so. Um, that, that's what I'd like to do, you know, just, just not reinvent the wheel, but enhance the wheel.
Thank you. Great answer, by the way.
Councilmember Denson, next question?
Yes, John. LTAC meets monthly on the second Tuesday at eleven AM. Do you have other commitments that would keep you?
Oh geez, I can't, I can't make that. Of course. Yes, I'll be there.
Okay, John, last question. Uh, do you have anything you'd like to add or any questions for us about the LTAC?
Well, I see that there, now you, we, we, when I was on the LTAC before, we didn't have it split up between. Uh, uh, you know. Gathering revenue and, and allocation of revenue. What's the position I'd be looking at on the committee? Would I be in the, would I be the, the, the tax collector? Or would I be the, uh, the spender?
You'd be the collector.
Oh.
So, I, I will add to that, that there is.
I mean, tell me how, tell me how the committee's made up. I mean, we all meet, right? So, you know, since I'm the collector, do I have anything to say about the spending?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. So we are, we are just a well-balanced committee, uh, and all the only thing that, that we look for is, um. A balanced perspective, so we have a even number of collectors and receivers on the committee in order to ensure. That it is, uh, fair and equal in, um, the perspectives that they bring to the table.
So I get, do I get to go out and beat on doors and? If you want.
Would you advise it during COVID?
You don't, you don't personally have to collect the tax. Um, the state does that for us.
Is, is I chair LTAC, it's made up of the same amount of receivers and collectors. The collectors are the, the lodging. And they pay it to the state and then the state, about three to six months later, gives us the money. And then the receivers, in the old days, um, the receivers got, were nonprofits that got. Two to four thousand dollars or five grand or something from the city to do tourist-related things. Uh, Josh Decker has helped us, uh, follow the laws and make sure that we're doing it appropriately. So we've, we've fine-tuned that and now we've actually made it so there's actually up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That we give in grants to those nonprofits, which is about, uh, a little less than. Uh, a third, a little more than third of our, of our revenue that we collect. And then we give it to, uh, to people that promote tourism. And that's, uh, and, and everyone has a say unless you're voting for your own, and, own grant. So that's how that works.
Okay. Yeah.
I have one last question, uh, which you've kind of probably already answered in defining, um. Things centered around events as opposed to just, uh, what's happening. What is, you know? What is your goal for being on LTAC? And I have to ask everyone the same question, so. What would be your goal, uh, for being on the committee?
Well, I think to enhance, enhance tourism and to, to, to enhance Gig Harbor, really. I mean, if you enhance Gig Harbor, you're gonna enhance tourism. Um, I mean, you know, we, I, I think that there's, there's, there's things that, that can be done to, uh. Um. You know, we, we, we have, I, I don't want to go too far afield here for you, and I don't know how much time we've got, but. Um, I mean, I've been involved on, on mayoral and city council-appointed committees for, for many, many years. And, um. You know, we have done studies and more studies and more studies than we have done. You know, th- then, then we have taken advantage of the results of those studies and put them into effect. You know, we just, we, I mean, we've got plans for, you know, improving, uh, Harborview Drive. Uh, you know, we've got, we've got the old Mark Hoppin plan for, uh, what to do with, between Judson, uh, Pioneer and. And, and Harborview with that block that sits there, uh, uh, in, between those boundaries. We've got a lot of things that, that, uh, uh. Would, let's say, spruce this city up a little bit. Um, and maybe, maybe that's what we need to attract more people. I don't know. It's, it's, it's worth having a conversation over. But, uh, we, we've been, we've kind of been studied to death. And, uh, I'd like to, to, you know, maybe drag some of those old studies out and take a look at them. And, and see what there is in there that, that we can do to enhance, you know, enhance the city and enhance tourism. Um. I mean, if you want to figure out how to spend money, I mean, I can spend money pretty easily. So, but it's spending it wisely and, and, and getting the, getting a return for our dollar that's, that's important.
Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Thank you, John. John, we, uh, only have two, uh, people that we had to interview today and, uh, so we will probably be. Uh, getting an answer back to you sometime. If not today, definitely by the end of this week, I would assume.
Okay.
And thank you again for your time this afternoon. Very good. And we're grateful for your attendance.
Thank you for the opportunity and, uh, nice seeing you folks.
Hi, John. Thank you.
Okay, it's still. Connected in there. There we go.
Oh, his, his mention of trying to, you know, we're geared around events. If we can do something to have something every day, you people are here. And that's, that's great, you know, you're in Seattle and you plug in Gig Harbor and you see things going on all the time. It doesn't have to be an event each, you know, and he's right with that. So that was a good answer.
Saltwater taffy. It's what draws everyone to Atlantic City. You want it every single day. There's no excuse that you need to go. Saltwater tap. That's what we need here.
Well, that and the prohibition stuff.
Salt, what is it? Our chocolate, our salt chocolate, what is it called? We have a company that does.
Gig Harbor Candy Company?
Yeah.
Her heritage distillery.
People come from Seattle, get that saltwater candy.
Yeah. I had to drive all the way across America with it in my trunk, so I could get it to my aunt, our sister-in-law in California. And it melted.
Okay, so, so what's the situation right now, Laura? We've got two applicants for collectors. Warren, is he the recipient?
So if we, if we allowed two collectors, then we would be able to accept Warren, as far as my understanding is.
We need, yes, we had.
Still have the application for Janice Denton, you have to consider as well.
Right.
He's a collector as well. So we've got three applicants for collectors. We've got one for a receiver. That's Warren. And then if we.
Yes.
Fill those three spots, we're fully full.
Well, if we fill two collectors, then Warren can come on and we're full.
We have to, we have to have two. We can't have one, bring on one collector to bring in Warren?
No, because you.
Yeah, sorry.
Part of the group that wanted it fifty-fifty.
Right, so then that would leave us.
Has to be fifty-fifty.
That's a law, I think.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, can I propose that we, um, we'll talk about the LTAC committee appointments first. And then while we've got Laura and the mayor here, and then we'll go to the parks, uh, so that Laura doesn't have to be part of that. Listen, of course, you want to be part of that, Laura. You're welcome to, but just while we're, we're considering your time and.
Oh, the power.
And respect.
Thank you.
I'm happy to nominate John Moist as a collector for LTAC. I think he'd do a good job.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So I think this is a recommendation to the council to appoint. Is that correct, Josh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And I would be very supportive of that, just, you know, as mayor.
Okay. Do we want to make a recommendation for James Currer?
I'll just, since you're the ones that are voting, I'll just say that I, I think he has a lot to add and I think he would be really good. One, you know, so I would hope that you would nominate him and support him. One thing that Ginny mentioned in a way, which I would agree with, is he, I would, that would be on the condition that he would not do all the meetings virtual. That would be a condition that he comes to some of the meetings. And as Councilmember Wook indicated, you know, we want investment in our, of our group of being here. So being that he shows his, he lives in Seattle, but his primary residence or his residency shows as Gig Harbor, I would, I think he would be good, have a lot to add. But I think it would be important that that means he has to come to some of the meetings in, when we get open to, back to normal. And I think that kind of, that's my thought.
I think that's really important because I think that was our main criticism or concern about the other woman is that she's just not physically here. She lives here normally. This is her home. That was our concern. So if we go with James, I think he needs to attend the meetings in person when he can. And I know that, I agree, he sounded like he really has a good marketing mind and I appreciated Laura's perspective, that he brings a different perspective. And with 15 to 20 homes that he manages, that's quite a lot. I mean, that's bigger than probably some of our, well, certainly some of our bed and breakfasts, but some of our ends here. Personally, I have a little bit of a concern with having too many BBROs in Gig Harbor. I think we need to just be very careful about that, but this is just my personal opinion. I'm looking at what's happening in other communities around the country. So, but I don't think that's a reason to exclude this gentleman when he is collecting funds legally. That's great. And, you know, he clearly represents a part of our lodging community. So I'm okay. I don't see that I have a reason not to support him.
I don't support him. I don't support him because he doesn't live in Gig Harbor at all. At least Janice, and I don't support her either because she's not here six months of the year. But at least she's here, six months of the year. I mean, I would rather, I mean, I know we want Warren on and I'm all for that. I want him on too. But at the same time, I think we need people who know what's going on in Gig Harbor and who know the groups that are likely to promote something from Gig Harbor. Which group is a good money that you want to give your money to, that you want to give a grant to? You need to know who these groups are and you need to know what they do for Gig Harbor and how important that is. And that's why I think the collectors need to live in Gig Harbor.
I will say, I think that might just limit us a little bit further. You know, it is difficult to get a 360-degree perspective on all of the collecting sources. So that's the only concern I have and I share that with you. I think he should also, it would be ideal if he was in Gig Harbor and servicing this territory. I think by being on the committee, they learn a bit more about who's making a difference in Gig Harbor. They have a better, I don't necessarily know that living here gives someone an education on what specific groups do. There's a lot of confusion about who does what. So I think, I think membership on the committee would inform him enough. I would also say that if he does not work out, he's going to self-select himself out fairly quickly. I know that we did appoint Kim from in Gig Harbor. She self-selected out pretty quickly because that wasn't right for her time schedule. I think it's interesting to have a different perspective and Rob and I agree with you too, that the number of Airbnbs or VRBOs is going to be something that we keep a very close eye on. But it is a legitimate source and something that's growing too. So it is, anyway, people come to stay in Gig Harbor is a good way for our lodging tax funds. And I do think it's interesting to have that perspective of what the market is and where they're moving. I think it actually might be beneficial for us because we do want people who are well-heeled and living in Seattle coming down and staying at those Airbnbs and coming down and staying in our hotels and leaving their sales tax revenue and leaving their lodging tax revenue with us. So given that that's a key market, I feel like that might be something that could benefit us.
Okay. I will, I'm going to go ahead and second Councilmember Rob Denson's nomination. I will say that at first I wasn't really impressed. I felt like he kind of came to this as a fluke. Abigail suggested, hey, maybe this is something you should get in on. And he didn't really, in my opinion, like John Moist, I thought, you know, it's, he knew why he was there. He was there because he had a specific reason. I kind of feel like James maybe just felt this was an opportunity for him. But I do appreciate Laura's comments and I think that they, I appreciate her perspective. And I feel that he is someone that maybe looks attractive to her. I do, I'm not in disagreement with Councilmember Wook, but I do think I remember correctly some of his statements about his residency. And so we'll have to go to the tail of the tape on that. But I will second the nomination and I guess we'll now vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
I will say aye. Councilmember Wook?
Nay.
Nay. Thank you. So two and one.
One quick note for down the road, so like years down the road. If we have troubles with collectors, council might consider not having them be in the city limits. And then we would be able to find more of maybe what Ginny's, Councilmember Wook was talking about. So my point is, I spent a lot of time trying to get the lady from No Cabbages, who is a personal friend and she's great. She's over by Sunrise Beach. And I think you know who she is, Councilmember Wook, but No Cabbages, she's had a bed and breakfast for 30 years and she just promotes Gig Harbor to death. And I had her all on board and then I found out she couldn't do it because she's not in the city limits. And she knows so much about Gig Harbor. Councilmember Wook, I think you know, she would be great.
She would be great.
She would. And those are what we're missing out on by having it in the city limits because she's right there. She's two minutes away or four minutes away from the end of the harbor. But, so you might consider down the road mending the bylaws to let, you know, just, you know, whatever you want to say, within four minutes of the city limits.
Well, I thought at one point we had done something about the Urban Growth Act or area.
We did it for the Planning Commission, I believe, and I actually was not in favor, I don't believe, of making everybody in the city limits. So I hope that someday we.
If I can interrupt, we're talking about state law here. This is a provision of state law. We don't have the ability to change this. You must be required to collect the tax in city limits by state law and you must have an equal number by state law. So this is not something that we have the purview to change.
That's not, that's a state law, Josh?
That's the state law, yep.
So does his residency even factor in or?
Residency does not factor in as long as there are representative of a business that's required to collect the tax.
Okay.
So as long as your business is required to collect the tax and you live in, and then you're collecting the tax inside city limits, then you're eligible.
Okay. You may have to remind me about that every once in a while, Josh.
All right.
Are you? Yeah, we vet that out before we bring the applicants on.
Since Laura's the one that runs the tourism, is this group, if Laura reached out to him to make sure that he would come to the meetings or before we, you know, go to council with this, are you okay with that?
Yeah. I can imagine Warren wouldn't come to the meetings.
No, no. If Laura could reach out to James.
Oh, okay.
Being that she runs tourism, I think it's appropriate for her to, you know, if he has questions, she, you know, when are the meetings? If she can explain that to him.
So you're going to ask him to be here at every meeting, right?
I can. Do we want to say every meeting or do we want to?
Some people don't. We just had a meeting a week ago and we didn't have a call because I wasn't there and two other people weren't there and they live in Gig Harbor. So nothing, we can't ask them to do anything different than we ask everyone else.
Right.
But I can ask him, maybe I do it this way. I'll just ask him if he can commit to being down here for once. We have an every month meeting. How often he expects to be here in person for those?
Right.
And I leave it open-ended for him to answer.
And we did, to be honest, that was number five, Councilmember Denson. I was there. She asked that question. Meets monthly on the second Tuesday at 11:00 a.m. And I don't remember his answer, but he did get asked.
Yeah, he said yes. I think it's always good to clarify since we know he also works in Seattle.
Yep.
Lives in Seattle.
Lives in Seattle.
Okay.
So then are we able to, we're bringing both of those guys on and then we're bringing on Warren? And so who will reach out to those folks? Josh?
We have to.
I will let them know. I will have an agenda bill in the packet that's coming out tomorrow that has their appointments.
Okay, so doesn't it have to come before council first?
It does.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. I'll let them know if they've been originally recommended.
We, exactly. Josh just said that.
Okay. All right, now we'll move on to parks if there's no other business with LTAC.
Thank you all. I am so grateful to have a full committee.
Thank you, Laura.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
So I'm going to nominate Anastasia Wright and Mary Barber for Parks Commission.
Okay, I will second those. Councilmember Denson, are all in favor?
Aye.
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 And again, those are recommendations, I think, to the council since the council votes.
So you're, so just, you're comfortable with the knowledge that you heard from her?
I am, yeah. I feel that she, you know, has lived here two years. She may not know the names of the parks, but that doesn't mean she hasn't been to the parks. She's working with the Fish Food Bank, so she's an active member of our community. She's involved. She's a volunteer and she shows that. I think also the perspective that she's obviously a foreigner, I'm judging by her accent, you know, may have some practical experience from other countries that could benefit Gig Harbor. And I don't see that as a reason to exclude her.
And although, you know, I wish we would have had more applicants and some applicants that had, you know, more experience in our parks. But I personally reached out to a bunch of people and asked them and asked them to spread the word. And, you know, you have to, I think you have to give it to her that she applied and stepped forward and she'll grow. We've got a great Parks Commission, a lot of very experienced people on it. So I think she'll grow and learn and hopefully become a really productive member.
And she cares about Gig Harbor enough to live here.
Yeah. And she showed up to the meeting.
So yes, I think she'll, you know, and we have, next year, I think there are two more seats available on the Parks Commission.
Did we find out why Ben was not able to make it?
He's not responded to me at all. So at this point, I'm not sure. So I'm going to need some direction from the committee on that. Do you want to try to schedule a special meeting to interview him? Or do you want to reopen it up for new applicants? We'll have that vacancy still. I know that, that staff has had conversations with him and he's very interested in staying on. He's been pretty active on the committee, so I'm not sure.
I would be supportive.
Communication problem or?
I'd be supportive of if the other council members want to try to arrange another meeting with him. I would be supportive of that.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Something must have come up. Things happen.
Okay, I'll reach out and do that.
All right, any other final business?
The next regular meeting of the committee for April and also the one for May, we will not have any scheduled interviews or vacancies. So I don't think we'll have a regular meeting of this group until June when we have Planning Commission applicants.
Okay, try not to make that June 12th and I'm happy.
Yeah, it'll be the third Monday in June. That's the 19th, I believe.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second. Oh, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Josh.